Let's get going. Good evening and welcome to the budget session for the Villa Park. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, we just called the poll.
All right, so Councilman Colacott?
Here.
Councilman Rosini?
Here.
Councilman Zimmerman? Not present yet. Mayor Protem Miles?
Here.
And Mayor Pitts?
Here.
And also for the record, staff present or myself, Steve Franks and Jim Gorzoe, our finance director. And we have on staff is Alyssa is running behind the scenes along with our technician angel. So our crew is here.
Cool, thank you. I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask Mayor Protem if she would lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
The honor to.
Alyssa's gonna put the flag up. Alyssa? Alyssa's gonna put the flag, here we go.
Aww. Please stand, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which is ten. Thank you, thank you. Okay. We receive any public comment or anything during this part of this meeting?
No, sir, we did not receive any public comment.
Okay, then I guess we can just proceed into budget discussion.
Okay, well, Chris, I mean Alyssa, you want to start, we're gonna go with PowerPoint presentation. So we're gonna start with that if Alyssa will get the screens here on that. Okay, so tonight is our first City of Villa Park budget workshop for the fiscal year 2021 that begins July 1st and goes through June 30th of 21. So we are at tonight, we are not taking any formal actions, a workshop intended to give the council a picture of where we are and talk about an idea of our projections and in our assumptions that we are built in. And it's also to gather input from the council should they want to add as we talk. So Alyssa, second slide. So the order of how we're gonna do things, we're gonna talk about our revenue projections and the assumption that for this year and then our revenue assumptions for next year. Our expenditure issues that we are talking about for the assumptions and things. And then we'll give, have opportunities for the council to add or ask questions or add, give direction to staff. So we'll go from there next. This, and I'll remind everybody, this is being streamed as well, so our meeting tonight will be, is published on our website afterwards and it's also being streamed on Villa Park TV as we speak. So if anyone has any questions, we can certainly get back to them and do it. So all this information will be available on our website. The first slide is our budget projections for 1920. This should look very familiar because we went over it just the 28th. We just about a week ago, week and a half ago, or two weeks ago, I guess, almost. Of our revenue for the current year, we have about 4.6 million dollars budgeted in it. We are going to be under it by about 82,000. And that's lower for a number of reasons. Primarily COVID-related, property tax, property transfer tax, interest permit, sales tax, our public safety sales tax, et cetera. All are basically, our user fees are down. That's about 82,000. Our expenditures are overall, we're under budget significantly for a number of reasons. Our salaries and employee benefits, we have 145,000 under. That's primarily due to the, one of our staff being out on workers' comp. We have, our operating expenses were 277,000 under budget largely because of us holding some projects and those types of things. And then we have capital projects were 130,000 under budget. You'll recall that we, there was 953,000 that last council meeting, the council approved in capital projects for the rebudgets, or not rebudget, but to continue forward. Given the timeframe, those are not included here, but, but in our net position is 470,000 under budget. So next slide. Yes?
Chad says he's waiting in the lobby.
Okay, Alyssa? Here he comes. Chad, are you in? Alyssa, is he in? He's connecting, so Alyssa, you're one slide ahead. You gotta go back one. There we go. I wanna have. As he connects, I wanna have him have a chance to.
He's on.
Is he on, okay. Not on my screen, so I'm assuming he's on.
He's on.
Okay.
Are you telling me about me?
Yes, sir, okay. So Councilman Zimmerman, what we were just doing, the first slide you just missed was just a recap of where we updated you on our budget last, on the 28th. Basically, we are page three of the, of the PowerPoint which shows our net position of 470,000 under budget, which excludes our carry forward for budget projects that the council approved moving forward. So now we'll move to the next slide, Alyssa. Okay, so where are we going to go for next year, our projections? This is sort of the, the first estimated number about where we look for, where we look for next year as compared to current year. So basically, to get there, we're gonna take our fund balance that we had about 4.5 million to start last year. We take our revenue projections for 19 and 20, which we're in current. And then we'll take our, we'll add that in, we subtract our projected expenditures about 3.5 million. Then we will, the council, we recalled, approved 953,000 of projects to move forward on. So that basically gets us through 1920. Then 2021, we're projecting revenue of 4.4 million, which you'll see is lower than our current revenues by about, just about 80,000 roughly. So that's, that's reflecting the, the sales tax implication for that. Then we'll tack away, take away our, from that amount, we have reserves and we have our fund balance for the potential cars contribution and in designated reserves. Those are like vehicle replacement, sick annually payout and those kinds of things. So in total, we'll have about 6.6 million available to spend in all funds. That includes carry forward FBA. Last year, we had approximately 6.9 million. So to give you a perspective, we are down about 300,000 from last year. Largely, that's because we use some of our FBA, our fund balance available to cover our property, I mean, our projects. So where we are is, we're probably as close to a static budget as I could say. I mean, you know, your 300,000 is, is not much because it's FBA adjustment. So next slide, if you would. How we did our revenue estimates for next year, because that's sort of a really ticklish issue. Our property tax variance, we are actually projecting a 0% growth over our actual collections this year. What does that mean is that our assessed valuation may go up, but our collection rate may go down. So we really are not sure exactly where we're going to be because the governor has awarded a, the ability to delay property tax payments. So this goes into the TDR plan we've talked about with the county. So there, the property tax variance, to be on the conservative side, we're projecting sort of a flat and no growth. However, I would expect Villa Park's property may have some growth unless we get sort of a recessionary trend, in which case we wouldn't. Our sales tax, you're gonna recognize, we were about 80,000 under last, under last year or this year. We're gonna be about 70,000 next year. We anticipate some level of, of small growth in our sales tax uses. Our passport, we get about $6,400 a year, which we're collecting on that. So that's revenue there that I'm, we're showing. Now CARES Act and FEMA funding. This week, we're submitting a claim for about 40,000 in FEMA money for our expenses. What, what did we receive on that? Best case scenario, at 40,000, we would receive 30,000 because FEMA pays 75%. The state pays 25%, but that's an optional fill of a remaining, they pay 75% of the remaining, 25%, but it's an optional fill by the state. And I'm not counting on that because the state has already revealed that they're underwater at this point. So the tune, they're both, if you read the legislative analyst and you, the governor's May budget, they have significant problems, so I doubt very seriously that they'll get, they'll be paying for us. The expenditure reimbursement for the CARES Acts will be for May, I'm sorry, April, March, all the way through December is where the CARES. So our net change, again, right now, we have not factored anything in for reimbursement into our revenue. So we are expecting 80,000 less than our budget for this year as far as revenue for next year. So that's sort of where we're at and what we're expecting. Now, that's a very conservative approach, but again, I'd rather err on the side of being conservative. So the adage that I've sort of always adopted was, talked to me long ago, was you underestimate your revenues and you over anticipate your expenditures and you never get wrong, you never get off that way. So we are going to go with the underestimating our revenues and we're gonna talk about our expenditures. Now, with expenditures, what's important to know and for, and everybody needs to know who's watching is, we will have to submit a balanced budget. So we will have to balance to our number eventually. State law says that local cities have to, have to submit balanced budgets to start the year. That doesn't mean actuals come in balanced, as you know, variance is gonna happen. It's happening this year, so we're, we're gonna do, but our challenge is to submit a budget for next year that is actually balanced. So with our revenues, we kind of know where we are. Again, we're 80,000 less. Let's talk about the expenditure issues that we're gonna have to address. And this is sort of the focus of what we want to address tonight because I want to make sure the council has a good context of what we're seeing in our budget and what we have to do. And they have a chance to sort of weigh in on some of these. So Alyssa, next slide. And, and I would also say, there's, if there's things we're missing, then let us know. So this is a long list, they're gonna be the next three, four slides are all about issues that we're gonna have on our budget. So our law enforcement contract, that is the largest single expenditure we have in our budget. It's about 1.8 million dollars, 1.9 million. Next year, the original estimate we saw was a 10% increase. So Jim and I worked carefully to express our concerns in a diplomatic way. And at this point, we are now expecting about a 5.3% increase. That 5.3% reflects the same level of service we have now. The reason there's a 5.3% increase, you might ask, is because the county, right, last fall, negotiated a salary increase for their deputies. So this factors in debt, factors in increases that are both, it started in January of this year and will kick in again in July. So those are approved contract expenditures and that also affects their, the respective benefit rates that are attached to that. So those are contractual obligations. It does not affect, and everyone should realize that our law enforcement services will not change at all at this point. Our animal care services are, we spend about 13,000 a year. And then we have another 5,600 that we pay for the construction of the shelter amortized over a couple, over, I think, 10 years. So we're paying about 18, 19,000 for that. Those are external and talking to the county, they're doing everything humanly possible to keep it 0% growth. So while that is a 18,000, we will probably come in under this year because it's actual expenditures. That's it, that's sort of a notice of intent, that's what they give us a ballpark number. But we end up paying actual, an actual is distributed based on a proportionate share. We have an extremely good population Villa Park with high license revenue. That's the people pay, we have 95% of our residents pay their light, pet licenses, which is, the countywide average is somewhere between 50 and 60%. So we have an extremely compliant group of residents that are very responsible pet owners. Hopefully, anyone who's missing that 5%, we can certainly make sure they're, they're in. Our cash reserve is 1.7 million dollars and, and we'll talk about that at a different council meeting. That is in there, that is it, we are not touching the reserve at this point. Cars contribution, you recall, we had a four-year plan to submit, to advance 100,000 for our potential, for our unfunded liabilities and to keep our pension obligations sort of flat relying. We are over 80 somewhat, we're about 84, 83, 84% funded in our, our retirement pa, retirement program right now with gophers. Again, a healthy program is considered, anything over 80 is considered healthy and we are in that very healthy range. So that's, that being said. Couple things now, we're gonna get into some where the decisions, well, actually, the decision is, the council has a decision whether or not to put in that 100,000 in for next fiscal year. We have, we are programming it right now, but that's one of the things we can sort of talk about later. We also had, as you recall, 50,000 budgeted toward the one, the green belt. We haven't done anything, we were gonna meet in March and then this COVID pandemic hit us. So we were, we sort of put that in the hold. We were gonna have a public hearing on it, but the ability to have a public hearing was quashed. So we are in hold for that. Again, if we budget that for next year, my recommendation is we do something with the program, with it next year. But what the amount is and what's set aside is there. There's also another item that we had, but that, we had some money dedicated to us with an agreement. But that money will not be provided to us until they take out permits from the City of Orange for the properties. There's a 25,000. So we probably won't see that for some time because in November, the City of Orange has a referendum on the ballot and no action will be taking on permits until that time. Okay, next slide, Alyssa? In our budget, what we typically have budgeted is upgrades station by station and we move through and, and we've upgraded a number of them. I think there are two left in our system to do. And that's including screens and whatnot. I think mine is actually one of the oldest in the, in the office right now, but it's $10,000 we budget each year. The next item that we, we have would be the state of the city inaugural event. We had not had this year because we, we were delayed slightly on that and then what happened is the COVID hit. So that sort of is held out there, but that's a discretionary item for the, for the council. We did have a very successful winter wonderland event in December and that was $10,000. That's a discretionary item apart the council. The housing element update, you recall, we've been working with John Douglas on that and it's due in October. And that plan is, we had contracted with, with a consultant and the final element will be $30,000 and he's well in midst of, of working on that. Will be coming to the council, probably, I'm guessing, in June, right around there. So we'll get some input early because the COVID thing has sort of slowed everything down. The homeless litigation and we have a shelter contribution, we make about $7,500 a year. That is something we signed up and that was resulting from a settlement agreement relative to federal litigation. And that is for allowing us to use shelters in Placentia, Buena Park for our homeless. Next year will be, or this year, next fiscal year will be time for another election. Every two years, the cycle. We spend and then the registrar voters basically charges us for their actual cost proportionally spread among the county. We are hit with expense in arrears and so we're estimating about 10,000. Last year, this is a general election, so it's a slightly larger ballot. Last time around, it was about $8,000 and there's some additional costs that we're expecting, including upgrade of their, of their voting system. So all said and done, we're expecting in the range of 10,000 that we will have. That 10,000 is a mandatory expense, so when it says external, consider that mandatory. Remember, the other item on, last item on this, last bullet, is the budget contingency. 150,000, which the council has generously put out every year and approved. That allows me to spend projects and get things done. I will say that we probably spent around 30,000 this year on various items which are related to COVID response, including partitions and various insundry things here. So that is an item, again, that amount, 150,000 can either be zeroed out or reduced or added or increased however you want to. Next item, Alyssa? Salary adjustments. Here's where I've sort of done a really good evaluation of where we are. We are not going to judge, we're not going to budget any merit increases. It's hard to do that when your revenue is dropping. I don't see that as something that we can do. We can revisit that if our, mid-year, if our revenues change, but at this point, I've already told staff that we should not expect anything. Workload adjustments. One of the things I am doing is, I, you'll see, I've used two of the staff members, Alyssa and Kim, almost interchangeably. We are, I'm trying to work Alyssa into a role. We, we lost Tweed during the last year and Alyssa has stepped up and now we're using her more endless role. But I need to pay her at that level. So I'm going, I want to make an adjustment, so it'll be a $10,000 cost to sort of bring that into parity. However, sorry about my lights. The, the management assistant interns, we had a management assistant, which used to be Alyssa. And we're going to, we, as a result of adjusting, there'll be a $30,000 savings as a result with no loss. The other thing we're doing is interns, we're using interns in a role and not using regular staff. So I'm, I'm able to use two part-time or halftime interns and we've been very fortunate. We've had high-quality interns, not just now, but consistently. We seem to attract them here in Cal State Fullerton and Chapman have sent us wonderful candidates. I even have some candidates in the crew, in the queue for down the road for next fall in the event that any of ours would decide to leave. But we're using them and it's been very efficient and it's a very, they don't have benefit costs. They repay them between 15 and 20 dollars an hour and they get tremendous learning experience. So it's a very mutually acceptable and, and good position. Yes?
Before you move off of the workload adjustments one? Can you just put a fine point on that? So we've moved Kim to Tweed's position and then Alyssa to Kim's position?
No, no, Kim has always been administrative analyst. I'm just re-titling it senior administrative analyst with no adjustment in salary, just re-titling it. She is doing some, some supervision of the interns and whatnot, just changing the title there. And what I'm really doing is moving Alyssa into a management analyst type position as opposed to calling it the, the office manager.
So then we're not back to Link's piece positions, what we're saying?
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Okay.
And I, I think we've been able to function very well and be very productive as a result of this and it's, it's high-functioning people is the key. And I, I'm very, very pleased with the staff we have and the configuration we have. So this allows us to have staff coverage at all times for all things we handled. This is the same coverage that we've been working on pretty much for last year when you figure the last six months, Tweed is gone and the six months prior, Kim was gone and we were functioning very well. So I, I'm very comfortable with this staffing plan. But I do have to, I do, I do need to move Alyssa into a comparable rate because candidly, another city will just snatch her up and, you know, I won't have any, I need to be competitive so she's not at a, at a, at a assistant level. Management assistant. Okay, technology improvements, did I answer your question, I'm sorry? I'm sorry. Councilman, did I answer your question?
Yes, I nodded, but maybe you didn't see me. Yes, you nodded, thank you.
Okay. Technology enhancements, a couple of things that I think we've consistently tried to do and we're trying to do even better. With COVID, we tried to set up a different, a better advanced website, but we have some work we really need to do on that. The problem is, you know, we've spent so much time on this COVID, all of us, so, but we've learned a lot, we know we want to make some website enhancement adjustments and I need to budget for that. Also, we have a financial system that is functioning and we bought it, I want to say twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen. It's got some modules that we may need to upgrade, not upgrade, we may need to pay to implement and we, so I want to budget that in there, but that would enable us to, we are still doing manual pay time sheets, we're doing an accounts payable system that is not as sophisticated as could be and the mayor, those who have served a mayor understand what I'm saying there. It's, it's not exactly, we, we want to have it so we can approve in queue as opposed to approve by email and it would be a lot more efficient process. But we believe that we can incorporate that into our system that we already have in place. So it's not a whole new system, it's different modules that we can do. So right now, for instance, our payroll has to be manually input by Jim, which is just a time, in my mind, a time waste and I think we can improve that. With that, so twenty thousand dollars, again, is something that I would recommend we put in there, but that's discretionary, if the council doesn't want that, that's, we don't have to do that. Council travel, we have eighteen thousand five hundred budgeted this year. You've spent all of twenty-five hundred or three thousand dollars. Granted, travel has been minimized over the last couple of months, but even so, my guess is you're probably spending far less than eighteen thousand five hundred a year. This council is not as much of a traveling group as maybe other councils might have been, but I leave that up to you and that's something in there that is a discretionary item. CalPERS contribution rate adjustments, this is sort of a big, the big unknown. The rate increase we're going to see just as a normal rate increase is somewhere in the range of fifteen percent this year. We don't control this, so this is external, this is mandated. So when they start charging us and they change their discount rate, we just get the bill. That's just the way it works. Now, they've already upped our rate, decreased the, the discount rate significantly so that it increases our contribution because we have to make up what they don't earn with their investments, we end up paying as a, as a provider. So we make that payment. The other thing that is probably coming, and here's what you're going to see is likely we're not going to feel it this coming year, but the year after. Their investments at CalPERS are sort of, they're rounded over a rolling five to seven year range, seven-year range, I guess it is. But as you can guess, they're probably going to feel some impact of the market drops that we experienced this year. So they're expecting about a seven percent return on investment is what they're charging us at right now. I don't know that people get seven percent on their investments, that's sort of a unrealistic number. However, what the number is with a rolling rate and what it will be, I think we can easily expect a rate increase in twenty-one, twenty-two, no question in my mind. What that will be, again, we don't know. There is some movement and the governor has talked about it, potentially freezing current rates for the next two years, but that means ultimately your system is going to be short money and you're going to drop in the amount of how funded, how well-funded it is and eventually you have to catch up. So it's a temporary reprieve and I'm not real wild about that, you know, I'm sort of one of those, give me the bill, let me figure out how to pay it. Don't, don't put it off down the road because we're just going to pay in the long run, it never, never turns out for the good. So I'm always of the ill, if you, if we owe something, let's start paying it and let's pay what we really owe. But that's not how CalPERS necessarily works and we'll have to roll with them on that. The next item, if you would, next page, Melissa? The first item here is discretionary, but I think the council's already approved the street rehab, moving forward on the street rehab projects, which would be the Slurry Seal, then this, and the street nineteen-twenty street maintenance project. To the extent those, we have monies budgeted there, that'll be carried forward, that's the nine hundred and fifty-three thousand and that includes every budget chamber upgrades. We're moving forward on all three of those, but to the extent they don't get paid out, we'll have to put them in next year's budget. So it just becomes, you know, the monies that we were going to get saved and spent next year, but they're on there, so, because they inflate your budget. We have DG repair, trial repair, which we have not done this year. The reason we didn't do it is because after the rains, we were right in the middle of COVID and it's, it's just been, wasn't as easy to get a contractor out there. We're, we're working on moving forward there. Typically, we have started projects and Councilman Colacott has pushed on projects each year to help us kind of get up our speed and our pavement index, PCI, our pavement condition index has gone up as a result, but we still have a lot of work to do. So we would like to probably start another project for the coming year. So that's in addition to what we're doing now. What the amount is, is going to depend, it is always dependent on what we have available, but that's a decision again of what the council wants to prioritize there. Forty thousand dollars, again, the councilman pushed for that, so again, it's discretionary, but I would recommend we put forty thousand, those, that's money we use to just repair potholes and not do repavements, but there are potholes and things that you can repair and save in the long run. And I think we've had, had some discussions in the past about that. Councilman Rossini has talked about handicap, handicapped accessibility is forty thousand dollars in the program. So with that program, we are, we'd like to continue rebudgeting it because we haven't spent the money we could. I think that's again, something that needs to be done. One of the things where we're looking for and we think we have potential opportunities are grants that could help us pay for that, but I don't know, grant sources are sort of changing rapidly as a result of the financial condition of both the Fed and the states. So I, I'm not completely sure that might be available, but I think it's something that we need to move forward regardless. We've also had to work with OCTA. You'll recall, we adopted a policy about handicapped accessibility and we need to do a route of handicap accessibility throughout the city. So we're working on that. You recall last week, the council, the twenty-eighth, the council approved the business recovery grant program. We were agreed that that's going to be federal funding reimbursement. We are continuing, as of this afternoon, I was talking with the county CEO about it and there's a number of, he's still in support of it, that the board of supervisors needs to ultimately make that decision. That being said, you received a copy, I believe, of a letter that the mayor sent to Supervisor Wagner encouraging him to make a commitment of a million dollars toward a federal reimbursement program from the CARES Act. We received that. Now, I, I don't know when the county is going to be moving on that, but we're trying to get them to move forward and get us a commitment so that we can. We do believe, we have the volunteers from the Investment Advisory Committee, a very strong group of very, very well-educated and very strong business acumen individuals from the Investment Advisory Committee and that's, they are pulling together and have the guidelines. So we believe by maybe middle of this week to early next week, the guidelines and an application process will be finalized and ready to go. Again, we don't want to roll that out if the funding's not available, but we're looking, hopefully, we've asked for a million dollars. Now, interestingly enough, we've come across, the Department of Commerce also has a program, believe it or not, and there's a lot of redundancy about what's going on with these reimbursement programs right now. So the Department of Commerce has a program that we might actually potentially be eligible for as well. So we're actually going to try and submit some funding application there. Now, do we compete well with other large jurisdictions we're also applying because that's a very limited pot of money? I don't know, but we're not going to know if we don't try. So we're going to again, submit an application for that and if we can, I don't view that as competing revenue sources, I view that as, if we get, say we get a million from each, we'd have a two million dollar program. We don't have to, they're not mutually exclusive, they would be used for the same purpose. So I think our goal here is to get a grant program that's robust and help our businesses as best we can and with potential federal reimbursement, a hundred percent factor. So I don't believe there's any harm in getting a larger program there and if we have more money grant, more money granted to us by the Fed, then I'm all for large enlarging that program. So I think, if I'm not mistaken, that's the entirety of the list that, right now, that both Jim and I were able to come up with as far as issues that we need to address or will address. So if I can pause here and ask if there are any questions, direction or concerns that the council would like to offer, I defer back to the mayor how he wants to do that.
Council people, any questions, comments?
Our, our process is, this is just sort of the first run-in, this is all, this is, this is sort of the pieces of the puzzle. Now we got to put that puzzle together in finite terms and come back and that's our project for the next budget workshop, which will be Monday, June eighth at five P M. So we have basically four weeks to put those puzzle pieces together and develop a budget that is balanced with all of your concerns in there. So if there are things that I'm missing and you don't think of them now, I, we have time to obviously incorporate those and like to hear from you. It's certainly not intended to be an exclusive list we have here, this is just to sort of give you the framework of things that we were able to identify. I certainly want to make sure that any other puzzle pieces are up there, please bring them to my attention and we'll do that. But our intent would be on May second, I'm sorry, June eighth, Monday, four weeks to come back and say, okay, this is how it all fits together, this is where we've had to adjust or whatever and at that point, the council could tweak and say, well, we like what you did here, we don't like there, we want to change this. And then subsequently, on June twenty, whatever, the fourth week of, fourth Tuesday of June, I'm going to look for a quick sheet, the twenty-third, we will bring back a full budget in final form for you to adopt. Again, there's a lot of assumptions here, you can see it and, and we're making a conservative revenue assumptions. I believe in some cases, we're probably overstating our expense, you know, in those areas, but I think that's sort of the, a conservative approach we have to take here. We're going to face some real uncertainty, we don't know how fast the economy is going to get up, we don't know if it will be as robust. We did start seeing a drop in late April, in early May, we've seen a real drop in our business, I mean, in our building permits and that sort of changes our activity a little bit. So there's a lot of things that are uncertain for us and it's going to only get clearer with time. Even when we adopt a budget at the end of June, it will be my expectation that we're going to have to go back either quarterly or in six months and probably tweak it again. And I just think the reality is, depending on how long this lasts with us, this new normal is and what this new normal consists of, we're going to be trying to figure it all out and have to roll with the punches a little bit. So we're being very austere in our, in our things I can control, like for instance, my salaries and things like benefits and I'm sort of trying to incorporate projects I know the council has included as priorities in the past. So that being said, I'm optimistic we can get a budget that, that works for us. We'll, we are, again, I would say, well situated because of the, the conservative nature of this council in the past and past councils. So we are probably in a much stronger financial position than most other cities, but we're going to feel an impact here and it's just a question of making sure that we don't overspend our resources.
Have you done any thought, thinking about how this would change if we knew, for example, that we were a year out from normal coming back and we thought, okay, well, once vaccines happen, I'm like, would this, have you done sort of like any projection about, well, this works if this is, if we all go back within two months or this works if we've all gone back in six months? What if the economy takes another year? What if it's another year and a half before clinical trials and we don't have a vaccine and everybody starts getting infected? What, have you, are there other scenarios that you've gone into that change any of our numbers or?
Yeah, and, and sort of the big, there are two issues that are going to drive that. The sales tax, and again, we only have two hundred and twenty thousand in our whole budget. We're already projecting about eighty thousand down, so we only get, we've only got a little room to lose in the sales tax revenue in a big picture if you look at it. The big unknown is our property tax and that one, I don't know, I mean, I think the property tax value, the assessed role will come out this summer and my expectation is that's a pretty consistent number with what we have right now. We're not going to feel the role changes in assessed valuation until the following year and what level that is, it just depends on a recessionary trend. Even in a recession, you're probably, you could see a negative, but not often, you're going to see flat generally as a rule because I, we could still see some growth next year, but we're not budgeting for that. So we're budgeting sort of a worst case right now, but again, if the governor changes the rules on property tax collections, the county changes the way they collect taxes, property taxes, that, that uncertainty, it's sort of like, it's like going into the batter's box and knowing what kind of pitches they have. I have no idea what it is and then they throw you a knuckleball. You don't know what necessarily you can expect on something like property tax. So that's, that's probably our big unknown and, and I'm not, that is a huge number for us, it's, it's, you know, three, four million dollars of revenue that we get between three and four million that we get a year. So that number is what we live and die on. However, I cannot imagine even in a worst case scenario, our property values dropping, you know, all that much. Now, even if they drop, your taxes don't drop unless the assessor changes the role and, and changes the valuation. So even during the recessionary times, he doesn't automatically, in the past, they haven't necessarily automatically reduced the value of your houses, if you will.
Steve?
Your property taxes still change only when the assessor will change that role and that's a year or he could do a supplemental role. So there's a lot of unknowns on property tax.
Steve, if I may, it's Councilman Rossini. I, I don't know if we can take a look back at, because we don't have the Houston Astros' sign capability here, but if we could take a look back using your baseball analogy, if we could take a look back at two thousand six, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, that might give us a pretty good, you know, metric of what we might be looking at in a really, really bad situation from a real estate standpoint. Because I recall having my own personal, the home that my wife and I had at the time being reassessed by the tax assessor's office and we never requested it, they did it voluntarily. So maybe we could take a peek at that and see what kind of drop in property taxes Villa Park had from oh six, oh seven, oh eight, oh nine, or whatever period of years makes sense. Given, because I think where Councilman Zimmerman is going is, it might be a good idea to kind of have a worst case scenario if all possible and I think you hit the nail right on the head, it's not so much sales tax, it's property tax.
I, I think you're right, Councilman, he did drop, as I recall, as I lived and I knew him at the time, he resisted doing a automatic valuation reduction. So he didn't do it without some prompting and I, I don't think he did it right away because I think he anticipated that the market would not, would improve. So when it started to drop, then he did, but it was sort of not an automatic, so it's sort of a delayed response.
Okay.
You, you sort of see this, you know, because like he's, he's doing a valuation role right now with the valuation right now or our property taxes next year. So you're, you're like, he's doing it a year ahead of time and he doesn't have, you know, so he doesn't have that information. So if he does a reduction and that's a voluntary thing he can do, he's, he's got the authority to do that, doesn't necessarily do it right away. So again, I think our impact, our risk is not necessarily this year, coming year, it's probably more.
Two to three.
Yes, two to three years down the road. And I, however, if the market is a V-shaped recovery and everything happens on a V-shaped return to economy, then I don't think you're going to have as severe an impact. If it's a W or a slow U, then you're going to have a bigger problem because then you got another dip and you got a longer recovery period. So a lot depends on sort of the market conditions. You know, I, I mean, it's, it's a challenge, but I think we, yes, we can, we certainly will go back and look at that and you make a good point.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, anything from, any questions, comments, thoughts?
No, I like how conservative Steve, you know, is. Definitely agree with Councilman Zimmerman and Councilman Rossini about just taking a look at the past so that way we can kind of get an idea. I don't think we've had to furlough anyone, so that's a good, that's a good sign for us being a small city. I know it's going to impact us, COVID with our budget, but this might be one time where us having fewer than fifty thousand people actually is an advantage, but appreciate all the work. actually is an advantage. But I appreciate all the work that's been put into it, and I know that Jim and Steve worked a lot, and I think it's a very conservative, safe approach for now.
Great, thank you. Councilman Colacott, any comments, questions, thoughts?
Not at this point. I, I would like to take a moment and remember our neighbor Jim Christensen, who, he and his wife Karen have lived in Villapark since 1969, and I've supported the ADA curb improvements in part out of my concern for Jim, and I know he keeps kicking this can down the road in terms of level of priority. I'd like to see that, that approved and implemented during this next fiscal year, if nothing else in Jim's memory.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Zimmerman, anything else?
I think that answered my question.
Okay. One last time, going once, twice. Councilman Recini, anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Steve, anything else from you? And I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
All right.
I want to thank you and Jim for all the hard work that you did. It was a great presentation, great first step. Really appreciate your guidance and leadership in this, so thank you very much. A big thumbs up.
Thank you.
With that said, I hereby adjourn the meeting. Our next meeting is Monday, June 8th, budget workshop, that is, June 8th, 2020, at 5:00 p.m.
And we're just, just for clarification, so the public knows, we do have a regular council meeting on the 26th, so between now and then, we'll have a council meeting on May 26th.
And assume it's also a Zoom meeting, again, unless things change.
I, I stop trying to predict what's going to happen tomorrow, let alone three weeks from now.
It's a safe assumption.
Understood. Okay. All right, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good to see you all.
Likewise.